I'd like to call this July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, town council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ron Granger, Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Thing, Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Kyle Ren.
Here.
Here.
You're probably young.
Uh, time is seven o'clock, just show it on the record. Alan, will you lead this in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Weber, will you lead us in the invocation, please?
Well, you're kind of going out of order right now.
That's alright, just keep going with it.
Just pointing it out.
Let's go.
Heavenly Father, gracious Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've created and we thank you for giving your son Jesus to live the perfect life and gave us an example through his life and through his death on the cross. For all who call upon his name, they shall be saved. And Father God, I lift up tonight's meeting, I lift up the council, town administrator, and all the town employees, EMS, police, fire, and Lord, I ask that you protect them and, Lord, protect our community. May you give us wisdom through your Holy Spirit tonight and through your son Jesus as we make decisions on behalf of the people we represent, uh, but most of all, may your name be glorified through all of it. Lord God, bless this meeting tonight and bless our time in your son, Jesus Christ, precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, Adam Pye, discussion and action to approve the town council minutes of July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve the July eighth, twenty twenty-five council minutes as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Tim, second by Kyle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six A petitions and public input. Aubrianna, welcome.
Um, good evening, my name is Aubrianna Tapia and I'm here to formally invite the town of Rangel to this year's county fair in Meeker. I'm the current vice president for the Chippigot four H club, the president of the Rangel FFA chapter, the district one FFA secretary, and the Rangel student volume president. This will be my eighth and final year as a four H member before I head off to college and hopefully the air force reserves next summer following my graduation. I speak for myself and the rest of the livestock kids in the county when I say that these animals take a lot of time and dedication. We get them around mid to late March and raise them until early August. It would mean a lot to see the town there to support all of the kids, whether that's in the stands or at the auction. The livestock shows begin July twenty-eighth with the swine show on the thirtieth. The auction is on Saturday, August second. If the town is interested in putting add-ons to any of the kids, you can do that by calling Loma Livestock. And if there's no questions, then that's all.
We gotta ask questions.
Go for it.
What kind of animals are you doing this year?
Uh, I'm just doing pigs this year.
Pigs.
Big pigs.
Big pigs.
Big pigs, yeah.
Do you have any idea how many Rangel kids actually were taken four H?
There's. I'm sorry, I know that answer, so I was getting antsy. Go ahead.
You do know it, because we got like twenty-eight in our club.
There's.
And there's some members that are like in combined clubs with Meeker and Rangel, so I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
There's roughly forty.
Okay.
What is an add-on? I'm not familiar with that.
So every year, there's the auction, so that's where people can bid on the animals, but if you're not interested in buying the animals, companies or individuals can give add-ons of any amount that they want to, which is just like a separate payment of anything to any kid.
So say Kilduff brought Aubrianna's pig for six thousand dollars.
That'd be nice.
That's close why you're bidding on it? So what they do for the kids is just add-on, like Moonlight could go in and add-on twenty-five dollars per person in for the Rangel area. And then that would go towards Aubrianna's total price sold of the pig, which which at times is better for the kids because they not only get the six thousand dollars that Kilduff's gonna buy it for, but if you have, you know, five to ten people given twenty-five dollars apiece, that uh, ten people would give her an extra twenty-five, uh, two hundred and fifty bucks. Right? Did I explain that right?
Yeah, that's about right.
The six thousand dollars.
I like that part.
And they used to do the, um, have all that online, we could get onto the county website and do it, but it's been a joke for the last three years where nobody could get on it. So they disbarred that this year, so the only way you can add-on is to call Loma Livestock or the county itself. Or be there the person. What are you doing with the reserves?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent yet, I'm like legally blind, so I'm very limited on what I can do, but that's the goal as of right now.
Is that the call out of reserves, Peterson?
Um, I'm not really sure what it's out of, I just spoke to a recruiter from Grand Junction.
I'm curious, I have experience.
Forty? Okay, Aubrianna, what else, horse?
She says she would.
That's all I have.
Is there, is there something that you're looking for from the town, like specifically, would it be um, support of four H or what are you, is that what you're kind of going for?
Honestly, just anything, I mean, there's, the membership has gotten really low and I think it's gonna continue to get low, but I think any support, especially coming from the town, would mean a lot to a lot of the kids.
Okay.
Now, is this something that would qualify for that community outreach grant that we got, that we have in the budget?
We could make a donation, um.
And the forty kids is county, right, why it isn't just Rangel?
No, that's just Rangel.
Oh, it's forty on the Rangel side, because there's different clubs and that's what I didn't realize, that there were different clubs.
So I don't know if you're prepared to ask for a certain amount of money? Could that's something that's.
Well, I think she left it open and I think it's something we look at with that grant monies, if, see what's available in it and then make a determination from there.
Do you know where we're at on the budget with that?
I don't.
I didn't.
I looked at it, but I looked at it a long time ago today, I'm sorry. I don't know it off the top of my head. We still have some in the, uh, fund for public giving, I know we do have, I think we have like twenty-five hundred on the topic.
Okay. Mr. Kilduff.
Does that, does your count, Kyle, does that include just the livestock kids or?
It was just.
The fireworks?
Just livestock, just the kids that were selling, yeah, animals.
Okay.
Buck, do you know when the add-ons closure is? How far after the auction, because if the auction's on?
The auction's on Saturday at one-thirty and I would probably venture to say the add-ons would be closed probably the following Monday.
So the fund for public giving, um, budgeted extended was thirty-three point five nine percent, looks like three thousand twenty-three has been expanded and nine thousand budgeted.
Yeah, but that was what we gave to CNCC, was what we already extended.
The three thousand.
That's what we gave to CNCC's aviation.
Okay, oh, that's right, yeah, and they're here.
Yes.
That's awesome.
So we have money in there, I, it, it's there, I mean, just FYI.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
Thanks Aubrianna, good job.
The only thing, I was, I was just looking at the dates. Our next council meeting will be on August twelfth.
Yeah.
We can find out on the deadline. Council wants to act on it or something.
Well, I think we should do something.
Is this something we could talk about and do a phone poll on it and then later ratify it at our next meeting?
I think so.
We could do it as an in-house, or if we're trying, I mean, you can put it on the next agenda to make it.
Right, to make it form.
Form.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, perfect. Any other public input?
This is one.
So, I think you guys don't know me at this point, I'm Nathan, I run the flight program for CNCC, this is Kenton, head coach for the NIF team. We meant to come see you guys a lot sooner than this, uh, but we're here now and that's what's important, so, uh, we wanted to bring you a plaque and appreciation. Um, with a team photo, uh, I don't know, you probably already heard, but we did really well, we did what we, uh, set out to do, we went and won. Um, top two year school, and with that, we brought some hats for you guys. We've also got some shirts, these were the team shirts that, uh, the kids wore in the competition with all of our sponsorships on the back, and we're pretty proud to have, uh, Town of Rangel right there on it and then our wings, uh, on the front, so. We just want to come say thank you again formally, uh, for all the support, you know, we, uh, we definitely couldn't have done it without all the help, so, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome and thank you, keep up the good work and hard work, because I know what you do is not easy with limited budget and expected to do with the world, so.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys.
Can we get us a picture, do you guys mind getting a picture for?
No, we'd love to.
Okay.
I'll be a gentleman.
I don't want to break in.
Peggy, what's your last name?
Shannon.
Shannon?
Yep.
S H I N.
Yep.
Are you gonna get up there?
Me? I haven't been elected to anything. Either.
I was speaking over here at the end, so.
Okay, everybody look at me.
Yeah, we got you.
Alright.
It was very sparkly.
I know it is.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, thanks guys. Thank you. Are you guys, will you? Beautiful.
You can put it there on that box. It's a good looking platform somewhere.
You will find some parts in it.
Alright, now Alan, is there any changes to the agenda? There are not. Okay. Public hearings, item eight, we don't have any. Nope. Item nine, town manager update. Um, I don't have very many for you tonight because we're gonna be covering, uh, a number of those things in other areas, like, uh, the rare grant, alright, and, uh, what we're doing with, uh, the. We're gonna put all this stuff. So we have another grant that we're talking about, uh, I think that at some point, I don't know, Tim, if you want to talk about, um, closing down the burn pile, um.
Oh, it's coming.
We're gonna close down the, the Purdy pile.
We posted that for the, um, election.
Yeah, I, I'm going to use that when I put my signs up, hopefully soon.
We're relocating that, um. Yeah, Jeff ran off, he has the exact location, it's about a mile down river, mile and a half down river.
Two miles west of Parkview by Scott and Melissa Dimbals.
Oh, yes.
They.
So we'll be relocating that and we'll get busy here pretty quick as soon as Tim's done. You're already done, aren't you, have you already closed the?
No.
Not quite.
I go to work every day with the thought of doing it, but here I am and it's not done yet. I have the signs and posts, I just need to get it done.
So we're gonna open that up down river. Yep. Right, and so what is that gonna do for the couches and mattresses and all that stuff? Nothing, I mean, that's the problem and it's, I, I've never found a place that we have, that we've been able to solve that problem. I've tried it in one community with cameras, tried it, but in one community I had to eliminate the dumping altogether. Uh, at this point, Tim's had his problems with the couches up there, uh, we've had that, uh, we, as we clean up our burn pile down at the end of Purdy Road, same things. It's kind of one of those things, I don't want to be fatalistic about it anyway, but it's kind of one of those risks that comes with the territory and I don't think there's any way to really fully eliminate bad behavior other than posting it and trying to keep an eye on it and monitoring it when, when we can. So is there gonna be open dates on it? It'll be the same dates and times that we have right now.
Oh, okay.
For the, for the Purdy pile.
So it'll be supervised up?
It will be, yep, it'll be closed except for when it's supervised.
Is there, is there a way to close that area?
Mm-hmm.
There's a gate.
It's a gated gate, yeah.
But it's still not gonna stop everyone, um, there are still people that will just abuse everything they can and just dump it wherever they can, so. You're never gonna get one hundred percent away from it. You know, I've worked at transfers, I've had communities where I had transfer stations, but that's another, you know, it's almost, almost an enterprise, but they're not. You know, money-wise, I don't know if that's something, with Morgans with the trash service, with the county and the town to where, you know, i- it's just one of those things, you know, because you got branches and then you got grass clippings. And I, I accept a lot of grass clippings from the local business up there and just mixing with dirt right now. Uh, just trying to help, you know, everybody out, to help the community out, really not much cost to it, but at some point in time, you know, something's gonna have to happen where it will be easier for people to get rid of stuff.
And really, the big problem with that is just the location of the dump.
Well, that and a lot of people don't wanna do trash service and, you know, they use the public dumpsters for their weekly trash. I have that in all my parks and, uh, all, golf course, uh, people just dump stuff.
Have we talked about in the past a service like a transfer station or something like that, Sean?
I have a transfer station, but I, people want to bring it for free.
You're right, right. Right, because everything costs money and people know that and they just want to hit the easy button and I just gotta get this one, oh, I gotta get this one.
And the stuff they bring, I can't, I can't do anything with it except for load it into big dumpsters and haul to the dump because I can't do green shrubs and stuff because they don't burn well and I don't have the space or anything else, so I only burn dry wood with my transfer station, pallets, deckwood or something like that, I can't process that stuff.
An ongoing issue. I haven't really given up, given up on it, but I, the best solution we've found so far is just to have limited hours and have it monitored. So when are the limited hours right now when the station gets moved out there, is that unknown? No, it'll be the same hours.
Okay.
It's Thursday and Friday, I think, from two to four. Um, I think is what we posted, let me double check it.
I think the Friday time is different from that.
That's what he had on the other one.
Oh, okay.
Two to four, so it's Thursday and Friday, two to.
Two to four on both.
And that, you know, to me, that makes it kind of tough for people to, to do it on a Thursday or Friday, because a lot of people are still working or just coming home from work and they're tired and then the weekend hits and they're, that's when they do on maintenance or they cut their limbs up during the week or something happens and then they gotta haul them off.
It's, it's been our concern, it's kind of hard to feel out the time where your pile's been opened for so long.
Mm-hmm.
People just haven't been coming down to the Purdy pile.
Yeah.
Because, because they can just go where you're at and we'll adjust the times, the dates as necessary, just based on the response that we get. Once we become the only show in town, so.
I've been referring people and they haven't had a problem, I've just like called the town, get their hours, Purdy Road is still open, you just have to be a little flexible.
Yep.
And I've been referring people because they call me and I, they don't like my prices.
And they shouldn't like my prices when Purdy Road is free. We've got a lot of that too, you know, down there, you've probably seen all the equipment. And we're getting in full swing with construction down there right now, so. Um, the other things that I had, um, the, the fun stuff, Jeannie's here to talk about, I'm not gonna steal her thunder. Um, so I'll, I'll defer the rest of that. That's, that's all, yeah, that's it. I just wanted to be on, on the public record that we did, that we are gonna make, um, a formal offer on the Andy Kraft property up on La Mesa, and so I know we've talked about it, uh, a couple, three times in council meetings and that is gonna be, um, coming soon, very soon. Okay, council reports, item ten. Alright, Jeannie, item eleven A.
Mary Bell. So we're gonna talk about the things that we've kind of done in the marketing department for, um, the Town of Rangel since January, so real quick, I'm sure you've seen that we have the new banners hanging now. Last time I was here, we were just in design stage, so those will work with the hometown heroes. Um, hometown heroes, in order to preserve them, will go up before Memorial Day and will stay up to Veterans Day, they'll come down. And then it'll just be these banners hanging on Main Street. So we are continuing that program, um, every time we get five purchased, we order them, right now we have four, I have another one coming. So we'll be ordering five more of the hometown hero banners pretty soon. So that's, program has just excelled, people really comment on it and like it and I think it's a great program. So I just wanted to make sure you guys had noticed the new banners. They're more colorful, there's more Rangel, we've got the fireworks, the Canyon Pantano, the River, we've got, um, the patriotic one. So I've been really happy with them and we've gotten a lot, a lot of good feedback from them.
I've heard good feedback as well.
Thank you. So, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about the rare grant, so the rare grant, as you know, was a half a million dollar grant given for businesses in the Town of Rangel. So that program is divided into two sections, there's a small business grant program with grants up to forty thousand dollars for existing businesses. And then there's the pitch competition. So the rare grant, uh, small business grant, the forty thousand dollar one, was released on April the twenty-eighth of this year. So we've had three businesses apply, uh, we have a committee through the RDA that meets to review these, they meet with the applicant. They're given specific guidelines, so two of those have already met with the committee. Um, I'm happy to say that the first one was approved at, uh, full, the full grant was approved and it was a great, uh, grant request. It'll bring a new service to our community, it was not the full forty thousand dollars, um, it's a business that will continue it. This will help this business continue in Rangel with their, um, it's a family-owned business, so they have younger people that are involved in it now. So this is gonna, this was a fantastic grant request, I thought. So, um.
Can you, can you tell us who it is or?
I can, uh, I can't give you a lot of specifics on it, we did co-sign, were required to sign non-disclosures, but it was Rangel Collision and I can tell you that was for new equipment. And, um, the committee is tough, I will tell you that, we have some tough committee members and they don't take this money lightly and they review everything, they cross every T, dot every I, and they're pretty, they were pretty thorough with that grant request when it came in. And, uh, they did ask for additional information from, uh, the owners of that business and they were quick to provide it and, uh, I just thought overall it was a great grant request. The second one, I can tell you.
Can I ask a question real quick, is how does that money, because we were probably awarded the five hundred thousand put into our account, right?
Uh-huh.
Or we were?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have it.
We have four hundred thousand, the other will come at the end of the year.
Okay.
And, um, that, I believe, was invested, wasn't it? Or we bought, Lisa took care of that.
I think it's one of our CDs.
Okay, so we are earnings.
Sorry about that.
We did have it invested, but we were told that any interest accrued on it has to go back to that, so we just put it in a money market account for rare because that investment, any interest allocated would have to go back to the rare grant. We couldn't put it back into our general fund, so we put it into a money market account.
Right, so the second application, uh, was partially approved, again, the committee was, uh, I, just for the record, I'm not a voting member on that. Mary Bell and I attend those meetings, um, just because I'm the organizer and the one most familiar with the grant. And then Mary Bell, for financial reasons, attends it, but we have five committee members and they have done a great job, so it was partially approved. It was for Blue Mountain, um, and they are gonna do quite a bit, they're gonna do some work and then they're gonna get a new website and things that will, um, benefit that business, so that was a good get, grant request as well. We have a third one, we have not met on that one yet, I think we're meeting the Tuesday before the next RDA meeting, so. So I'll keep you posted on that one, but, um, I did have my first meeting with the state, follow-up, I have to report quarterly. These businesses met with SBDC and we got great reviews back from all of them. So the state's pretty happy with how we're running the program and what they're seeing that it's gonna bring to the community, so, um, so far, so good.
So you have to report all these grants back to the state and what we're using it for?
Yep, I have to give the name of the business, what, I have to.
You have to provide what we are using the money for.
We have to do a financial accounting and we have to do a narrative. And we follow up with these businesses at six months after the grant and a year to follow how their business has done, how it's impacted it and if they've hired new employees, so we have that, uh, and I have to do a narrative for the state every, every quarter. Um, telling given dates and stuff, so, so far, I think we've got it running smoothly, so we'll cross our fingers that that continues and good businesses apply and that we can continue to help. I did create a rare website, can you click on that, Mary Bell? Um, on our website, so people can be referred to that, it's very basic because I don't have a lot of content like businesses that I can put up there yet or anything like that.
Sorry, it won't go through.
Okay, so we do have a basic website that has all of the documents on it that they can click on, pull up all the documents, I think it controls.
No, because of that power I brought it up on the screen.
Okay, alright, so if you want to go to our website, just, uh, it's under economic development, so just the rare grant. Okay, Mary Bell? So, and I'm really excited about this part of the rare program, it's the pitch competition. That just opened July the sixteenth, we kind of waited till the summer was winding down so that we could bring, um, start the pitch in the early, late summer, early fall. So, um, released on the sixteenth, I released, they are required to attend two four-hour classes, which are Friday and a Saturday from nine to one through CNCC because they'll learn about how to do a pitch, writing a business plan, a financial plan, how to do market research, so to put their pitch together, all of those things are gonna help their business. So that information and sign-up was released the twenty-first. We have three applicants that have already applied, I have a fourth one that, um, is going to apply that I met with yesterday. So already, less than a week, we have four participants. I will tell you that that grant is doing what it's set out to do, one of the businesses is gonna open one of the empty buildings on Main Street and actually did not know about the pitch competition and went ahead, rented this building, renovated the inside and then saw it and decided to, to do the pitch competition and, and I think it's gonna be a success for her, so that entire family. But, um, yeah, so we've had great success with that one as well, as you know, the prizes for that are fifteen thousand for first place, ten for second and five for third, that's a three-year program, so we'll get to do that three years back-to-back. So, pretty excited about that program and I think it has great potential. So I've done a lot of flyers, one of those flyers is about the pitch competition, the other about the classes, the other. the other's about the businesses, the small business grant and stuff, so I just kinda wanted you to see if you hadn't seen it on social media or hanging around town, that we've done quite a bit of work getting this promoted. I did boost all of this into the Rangelay area, because you do have to be a Rangelay resident to apply for those grants. So, we've, we've worked pretty hard at getting that promoted.
Is the pitch something you can go watch, when they make their pitch?
Yes, the way it's set up, we're hoping to have at least five, which the way we're going, we're gonna have quite a few. So, they'll, the judges will come in, and they'll present just to the judges. So, the judge will narrow that down to about five. And if we, if we have ten, you know? So, then, the final pitch is open to the public. And I know on one of the pitches I met with yesterday, she told me that her daughter-in-law's gonna, they can have two people present for the business. So, she and her daughter-in-law are gonna be the presenters, she, and she is ready, I mean, she could pitch tomorrow, she's done her homework. But, we've got some good stuff, so I was pretty excited about it. Tim referred one over, was looking to start a little business, and that was an excellent idea, and I think something Rangelay will need. So, we have, again, I'm not gonna be a judge in that, because I've organized this, and I don't want, I know all the businesses, so I don't want it to be a conflict of interest. So, the next project I've been working on is Walter. Walter is in production. And if you don't know the story about Walter, he was found about five or six miles outside of town. He is a fool, he was fully intact. And so, he's our dinosaur, so this will be a replica of Walter almost to the exact inches, he's long, he's gonna be huge. So, we met with the outdoor museum, to give you guys some background, I met with, we met with Dan Fiskus, and he really liked the idea of where you go into the outdoor museum, there at the East Entrance Park. He will go there in those gravels. So, CNCC is donating as big a plaque as we'll let them do to tell Walter's story. We have great pictures that James took of him being excavated and all kinds of things. So, there will also be kiosks there that we took up when we put in the Pocket Park, that talks about the dinosaur diamond. So, we are lucky, because the landscaping and installation, Main Street has a, an architect on staff. We took measurements and all the pictures, and they're designing how that should look from the road, and will do that design for us. We're also lucky that Joslyn works with a lot of architects, because, and engineers, some of the ones she's worked with that we've employed to do projects are designing the base, because Walter is huge. And he's gonna weigh probably a couple thousand pounds. And, so he has to have a special base, and they're designing that at no cost.
Can you say huge, like?
Ah, he's about twenty-two feet long.
Twenty-two feet long.
Probably about ten, twelve feet high. And that's about exactly what Walter was. So, I got all of that information from the paleontologist at CNCC, 'cause they are, Walter left the state for a while, because I can't say too much, but he's a rare breed. And so, they'll be making a big announcement about Walter.
So, they excavated the whole thing, was he in dirt, or was it?
Rock.
Rock, solid rock?
And he, yes, and they flew him out in a helicopter. And they took him on the back, they set him down from the helicopter on the back of a truck. And they drove him to Craig, where we have a repository there. And then they started digging him out. So, and now he's completely, they, I mean, you can tell what he is, and it's pretty cool. So, he is in design, we hope to have this late, early fall installation take place. So, we're pretty excited. We hired a gentleman, his name is Jeff Bates, and he did a lot of the metal artwork down in Grand Junction. So, he, you can see this is an elk that he did. Walter is gonna be metal as well, he's gonna be steel. And he'll be a, he's not gonna be fiberglass or anything like that, so he's just gonna be really big, heavy, and long-lasting, so we kinda thought that the steel fit in with the community. So, we, we felt like it was a good match, so that's where we went with that. But Jeff will be here when he delivers, and hopefully you guys can get to meet him, he's a super nice guy. Okay, Mary Bell? So, I continue to work on social media, I've said this before, when I started, we had a hundred Facebook followers. We're approaching five thousand now, we have people from all over the country, some out of the country, people in Europe, following us. Instagram continues to grow, it's a little bit slower, but it is growing. We started out at about forty or something like that when I started. And then Twitter, I just started, it had nothing, so we're at two hundred and nine, but Twitter, Twitter's a different animal, they're, they fight a lot on there. So, I like it, but I don't like it. So. So, other projects I'm working on, we talked about the hometown hero banners, that's continuing. The Rangelay review is crazy. People are, the library would take, if I could print five hundred, they'd take all, people come in, and now they've started recycling and bringing them back for other people. We only print maybe fifty every time, and then most of it are downloads from online, but we've started some new stuff on there. I love creative writing, so I started a story about Rangelay. I had the first, it's kind of a book. One in the last Rangelay review, and I, it's something I've been writing for a while. And I thought, I'm just gonna see if they like it, well, they did, it's sci-fi, so the next chapter will be out in the next Rangelay review. So, we'll start having some local kids, some local townspeople will be in the story, so I'm changing up those names, just to make it more interesting, but I got tons of text on that, when I put that in there. Website accessibility, we're pretty much there, I've got to do some more PDFs, but we're close. I had a guy call me, and he wanted to go in and look at the website with me, and when he went in and looked at it, he said, "Well, you don't need anything. Finish your PDFs, you're done," so we've done a good job of getting that up and running, and excited about that, so. Certified local government, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, we'll get down to that, as far as the letter goes. Yep, we'll hit that at the appropriate point on the agenda.
Okay, so we can talk more about that, so. But otherwise, that's where I've been lately.
Can you comment on dark skies as well?
Oh, yeah, we should talk a little bit about dark skies. I know it's not something that everybody thinks is a big deal, but it is a big deal. I mean, the tourism from dark skies can be, they even have a book where you can get stamps, where you go to all the local dark sky designated places. So, I have the application done with the exception, and it's hundreds pages, with the exception of the ordinance, which will be up to you guys to figure out what you wanna do. We have ten years, I'm trying to think, ten years for businesses to come up to code, which I met with Moon Lake Electric, and just because they have the most lights, right? And with the ten years, he said, "We change them out in that period of time anyway." He said, "That's not gonna be an extra burden for us." He said, "We just have to," and they've worked with other communities that are dark skies. So, they were the biggest one I was really worried about, which they will help us with a grant, but he did not seem concerned at all that, he, he said, "Ten years, that's what we do anyway." And then, the town has about five years on their buildings and stuff, so it's not something you're gonna have to go put a lot of money into. We'll change them out as we go. I know some people were afraid, "Oh, the lights have to be off at ten," or whatever. Well, there are regulations like that, but we're kidding ourselves if we thank any guys coming to Rangelay to see if the porch lights are. So, but it's a good program, we have really dark skies anyway, and I think it will do, I think it will do some good on tourism, I think it will bring some people in. There's a lot of people that just travel to do that. I'm one of those people, and I kinda see these people doing it, so. I think that's it.
What, do you go in and, like, observe, if you go into a town and they're certified as, you know, a dark sky?
People will go and just lay and look at the skies, they, photography is huge. Uh, filming, you'd be shocked, I didn't see the Milky Way the ten years I lived on the front range, you couldn't see it. I can walk out on my front porch now and see it. So, the photography for that, people just take tons of pictures of the Milky Way and different things. Meteors, which we've done quite a bit of that ourselves here, but we didn't even see it on the front range, so that's an attraction.
So, is there like a scale, like you can go out and say, "Our skies are this dark?"
There is a dark skies map that they produce, it shows relative brightness.
We also have a piece of equipment, and you have to be in a certain range.
To qualify.
Mike Kruger and I go out, and we take measurements at the same location every time, we have a map. And Rangelay is already there. I mean, I'm shocked at how dark our skies are, and the meter shows that. So, when we had the mentor helping us with this application, he came to Rangelay, and he went to every building. He did an inventory of all the lights, he took the measurements, and he said, "Yeah, I'm pretty shocked at it." He said, "When you told me it was dark, I didn't realize how dark." But we're pretty dark. There's a few things we would have to work on, but there's nothing that's gonna be crazy. And people sell these pictures for a lot of money. They'll take them in different places, rural Colorado would be really good to do that.
Didn't you say that there is some funding that's associated with, if we get to a certain status, or am I thinking about something else?
I think that is, Main Street's probably what you're thinking about, and we did reach that next level. So, when the state gets their money back, we will get about, yeah, we'll get more money. But we're waiting for the state to fill up their coffers, so, if that happens.
Awesome, well, thank you.
You're welcome, it's exciting stuff.
Lot of stuff to shoulder. Thanks, team.
Thank you.
All right, we're at
New business. Or old business.
Old business, item twelve, old business. I don't think we have any, item thirteen A. New business. Discussion in action to approve the June twenty twenty-five financial statement. So, I've got, I mean, looking at that, I think we're, we are million over. Is that the way you're seeing it, Alan?
Yes, although that will come out in the wash as time goes on. That's not unexpected, where we're at right now.
How, how are you thinking that's gonna come out of the wash?
So, which, which spot are you looking on there?
On general fund, so. On general fund, net revenue, revenue over expenditures.
So, we'll be realizing more revenues over time, and you're looking at general fund specifically on that?
Mm-hmm. I'm looking at the whole thing, and I guess my, my point to it is, is with the, the money that's expected to come in from the state, at this point, is very unknown.
That's correct.
Correct? So, this to me is quite alarming that we're actually a million over at, at this point. And that would, I think the million, million is total, total with everything, right?
Yeah, that's the percentage of where we're at for this time.
Percentage, but that's a dollar amount.
You can quantify it that way, or you can look at it and say we're, we're at sixty percent of the budget, or, or where you're at.
So, let's go over to the right, and start looking down through those, we, you know, we've got some, we've got some over there that are above budget, some of them that are riding the line, but then also some that are well below. Anything that you see, Alan, that's alarming?
Well, I went over this with Lisa, and also Mary Bell and I have talked about it, I'm not alarmed by, not alarmed by anything at this point, I think, at this point, I've, we've started the budget process next week, I plan on sitting down with each of the department heads and talking in detail about their budget and where we're going for the rest of the year, and about the fact that we don't necessarily have the money in the checking account, even though it's in the budget per se. And it's really based on what you're talking about, we're under our revenue projections, and what we're gonna get from the state is far from being sure, in fact, it's pretty sure that we're not gonna get a large chunk of it. And so, we're really gonna dig hard and make sure that how we finish out the remainder of the year. We've had a lot of our capital expenditures upfront already. Although, I wish that I could speak a little bit more specifically to each one of the departments, I still haven't had time to really understand all of the budgetary dynamics, I'm kind of leaning in on the way Lisa's educating me on the way the money flows on a lot of this at this point. So, I can talk in generalities, but I can't talk specifically to each one of these.
So, I know on most of our capital, capital funds that we've put in for, they're all tied to, that we will do this if we get a grant for it.
A lot of those were, some of them like vehicle replacements, things like that, we're not.
But I may be talking out of turn here, but it sounds, looks to me, at this point, with us being a million over right now, and not understanding exactly where we're gonna be at three, four, or five months down the road, that we need to tighten the belt up.
We do.
It needs to be, I mean, that's, that goes back to my point of over there on the general fund, there's some of those budgets that are, one of them is fifty-seven percent at this point, which should be lower than that, in my opinion.
It should be lower than that, and that is my number one priority, one on that, on that list.
And it needs to be, it needs to be reined in right now. Because we don't know what we're gonna get, and I don't wanna start cutting into our reserves at this point, when we're this far over right now. Yeah, go ahead.
So, on those, yes, when we do our financials, they, they get their financials with their detail of what they've spent, each department does, and on the bottom of it will say what percentage they should have already used as their budget. There are some line items that are out of their control, and that's payroll-related or health and dental. 'Cause it's always a testament, right? We don't know if somebody's gonna take a single coverage, no coverage, or a family coverage on health, which is a totally different animal when you add it all up, right? So, some of those lines are out of their control, that's something that, it's just a moving target constantly for us. Some of it is controllable, others are not. In the general fund, I will speak to this. I compare June of twenty-four to June of twenty-five, because when I saw that million, I was a little, it shocked me, to be honest with you, I know we're always in the red until we get our severance and minorlies, but that's a pretty big number. So, I did a comparison. Looking at it, we have paid Wolf Creek, we gave them an amount of two hundred thousand this year. We also purchased a grader in Public Works for two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our expenses, our expenses are up a hundred and fifty thousand, while our revenue is down a hundred thousand. So, taking all of that into consideration, that's where we're setting with a million. Right now, we have budgeted for severance and minorlies that we're gonna get a million for. But, you gotta know, for the next five years, we're gonna be, if we get anything, we'll be lucky, so can't count on that, so. Just a clarification on the general fund from June of twenty-four to June of twenty-five.
And that's nothing the town has done wrong, that's our state leaders that have legislated And that's nothing the town has done wrong. That's our state leaders that have legislated this and is causing communities to have to cannibalize themselves by their bad decisions.
Correct. On the revenues, I guess.
Right, they don't know how to operate a budget, by alone know how to draw a picture of a stick, if you ask me.
So that's where our revenues are a little bit higher this year versus last year, just to compare.
There's, although I don't think we're gonna see much in the severance department. Um, in the meetings I've gone to with the agency and speaking with other community leaders around the region, there's no complete consensus that we're not gonna do anything. So I'm, I'm hoping that I'm not holding my breath when it comes to those revenues. Um, and we are certainly going to be tightening our belt considerably. Um, that's the point of our start of the budget process, looking at where we're at in next week's meetings.
Anything out of DOLA? Are they speaking about it at all?
DOLA's broke right now. They have nothing. When you talk to them, they say, we don't have one dollar. We have zero dollars.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Alan, it needs to be tightened up and it needs to be tightened up pretty quick. The ones that are fifty-seven, fifty-seven percent over budget at this point is unacceptable. And I don't know if they've got, if it's got overspend or if there's been something that's happened that they would have had to happen.
Front loaded, um, some of it's the travel and training.
Fifty percent over budget or fifty percent?
Used in their budget.
Yeah, so.
They should all be at fifty percent because we've gone through half the year, right? So that's what you're.
We're actually over half a year.
That was one, one million and they're, and they've already used that much.
Which is fifty-seven percent.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. That, I don't know what's going on with that department, but it needs to, it needs to be nipped in the butt. This is the third time I've said it.
And the water fund will, I think will come out. It's just, you know, water revenues as it, as it's hot will continue to grow and we are having a whole lot more than we have on water too, so, which we go out at the end of the year.
And my other thing is, is if, if, if uh you're getting any pushback from these um overspends, then I'm more than willing to throw my name in the hat to get it slowed down.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I haven't gotten any pushback to this point, um, but I'm gonna see where things end up at the end of this next week.
That's gonna be through, of course, the mayor and it's your, it'd be your position to get a hold of it because it's not, it shouldn't be a council thing, but that's, that should be you. Any other questions on the financials?
I make a motion to approve the financials as presented.
A second.
Motion's been made by Tim, second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I know it. I'm just trying to get it on my computer. Thirteen B, discussion in action to approve a grant application for seventy thousand dollars with the Bureau of Land Management and Visitor Services to cover the completion of the river, put in signage, education and road access.
So this grant um was one that was recommended to us um when we started searching for money because we were over on our bids for the riverfront access grant and the, the boat ramp as we call it, but. Um, it was one that I don't think we expected, uh, but uh it's through the BLM and it was really encouraging uh when Jocelyn made contact with them and they wrote, if you look at that letter, that, that two-thirds of the bottom of the letter was what they wrote in support of us uh working towards a seventy thousand dollar grant. This is federal money. Federal money's difficult, especially when it comes to construction. Uh, there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through. Um, we're very enthusiastic about it. We have one problem with it. Um, the deadline is tomorrow. And we've been struggling to get access to the federal uh system that allows us to apply for it. Jocelyn's made contact with them to see if there's anything that we can do about that. Usually with federal money, the deadlines are hard. We're gonna press through and see what we can accomplish tomorrow. Um, we're not a hundred percent out, having talked with her, but we do need permission to proceed. Uh, if we're gonna pursue this and close out what we're doing. This will more than cover what we need in order to finish it as designed.
Is there a match with it?
There's not.
What happens with the project if we don't get the seventy thousand?
Uh, we've structured it in a way to where we can complete it so that it's functional within the budget that we've got or within the grant that we've got. And then to finish out the components like the, the wayfinding signs within the project and upgrading the parking and everything like that. Um, we'll pursue that in the next budget cycle. Uh, we're gonna be locked out of that site um fairly quickly because of uh the permits that we've got and when they, and when they expire, when they close out. So really unless we can uh, uh, unless we can do it within this window, uh, we're not gonna be able to do it with this contractor. Contractor understands where we're at and they've said that they're willing to uh modify uh the permission that we've given them or the contract that we've given them. Um, if more money comes in and add on to what they've done so that we don't have to deal with mobilization costs or any additional costs in the future. Um, so they're willing to work with us as we look for more money. This is our best money option that we've got right now. Um, I really hope that somehow we can uh get that grant in, but it's a federal grant. I've done plenty of them. They're difficult. We're gonna give it our best shot tomorrow. Um. So that's where we're at on it. Um, and we just wanted to present that to you for permission to proceed with that grant.
Well, Sam, I think it's Sam Rebo, maybe it's different now. Will Sam be able to help her out with that?
She's been working hard for us, trying to accomplish that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I really hope that there's some understanding uh with the struggles we've had with the, the federal websites to getting access to it. Um, understanding is my experience I have with the federal government, but uh the BLM's certainly been enthusiastic about helping us with this. Um. Sam's boss has weighed in on it and said that uh, that they'd like to see us get that money as well. So we feel pretty confident that if we can get through the hoops, we can get access to the funds.
I'd entertain a motion then on thirteen B.
Make a motion, a motion to approve the grant application for seventy thousand with the BLM to cover the, cover the Visitor Service to cover the completion of the river input and signage, education, road access. That's it. A second.
Kyle's made a motion, second by Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen C, discussion in action to approve a letter to the National Park Service affirming that all appointments made by the Rangeli Town Council for his stor- for history Colorado Certified Local Government Preservation Board will be signed by the chief elected official, which at this time is Alan.
Chief elected official and this is an interesting thing. Um, it's a requirement by the National Park Service. As you all know, the Certified Local Government Program is something that Jeannie's been working on. It'll open the way for grants for us to do um historic preservation within the town. And Jeannie, jump in if you want to, but uh, this is uh just a requirement by the National Park Service to verify these items that we've already agreed to. Um, it's part of their record keeping process and something that they want on file. And so we're just presenting it to the Town Council for approval for the mayor to sign that. Certifying to the National Park Service that we're gonna go ahead and comply with what's within, with what's already in the reservation to be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made by Tim, second by Kyle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, item fourteen A. Jeannie, do you have any feedback from how the Rally Car went this weekend?
Yeah, it was uh, all the feedback I got was very positive. So Rupert did not complain about anything, so that's usually a good sign. I think a lot of people went to the uh, to the welcoming where, and the chamber had, did a good job of having some vendors there and food trucks and so um, people were happy with that, of course, with the, the stars that they had a couple of stars there. Uh, Travis Pistrana.
Astron.
And uh, he signed autographs for over two hours. So I, I think it was a great event. And I would not be shocked if next year that's not a national event. I could see that easily happening. Cause when you get some star power in there and Rupert was able to make that happen. He's the one that runs Rally Colorado. When you get a little star power like that in there, that's got a lot of push. So he seemed to like the courses and so we'll see what happens, but I wouldn't be shocked.
Tim, do you have anything to weigh in on? They were heavily involved in your parks this weekend?
No, that's just something they'll have to discuss with us in the future. Cause we do a lot for them.
You do do a lot, Tim, and, and I did recognize that you all prepared that meal and it took a lot of time and gave them access to Elks Park and all of those things are a huge part of that.
Wait, hold you're done?
I'm done.
Plankton, what do you have, Plankton?
I had three different people tell me this weekend that it'd be nice if we could talk to the restaurants and see if they could stay open later and be open on Sunday. I know that that's out of your guys' control. Um, but I, when I went to the little closing out champagne ceremony the other day, I've had three different people approach me and ask, there's any way next year when they come back, if we could talk to the restaurants about being open later at night on Friday and Saturday night and open on Sunday. Because of the lack of food. That was the only complaint I heard all weekend. And Rupert told me that the, the Strongness team is already asking about how many more cars they can jam in the park next year. So I'm gonna guess it goes national as well.
So I guess that's, I don't know how much it was pushed to our um, local businesses, but that's a, that's a chamber thing and we need to, I mean, it's always tough with a chamber because they buy, you know, five thousand dollars worth of food the week before and then go out, but um, and I don't know what the chamber's done. I mean, that's kind of the chamber deal is for them to do it, but we can definitely, definitely work with them.
Well, and I'm hopeful that the Mexican restaurant here is gonna open up. Cause they probably will be open on Sundays. That would be helpful.
Cause the planning of it, Tim, how does the planning of it go? I mean.
As far as?
Like, planning the whole events, is Rupert coming to you with plans or is, or are they going to the chamber or is who?
I think he goes all over town. He met with us. He met, I know he met with Tim. I know he met with the chamber.
We're, we're kind of the main staple of it because we're the staging area and it's a, you know, it's a beautiful park and you know, that's more for the people of the community to talk about, you know, because uh, you know, we, we have very little help to do all that we do uh throughout the year and coming off fourth of July into this event, both Richard and I hit a, hit a wall.
Oh, I'm sure.
Because of the hours we've put in on this and we put this out for the community because of the, the economic benefit. It's a huge benefit for the community and and everybody prospers from, uh, it's just, it's time and effort from our side of it to provide the site, provide everything they need, make sure Wi-Fi's working, make sure this is, and people have access. Um, there's a trust, certain level of trust that goes with those folks on my behalf with the facilities that they're using and that needs to be discussed uh in the future with this type of event. Cause I think it's a good event. I think it needs to happen. I think we need to do whatever we can to make it happen, but I think uh Rally Colorado needs to step up and be a little bit more transparent of what really their budget looks like and what they can also do in the community for, you know, such the Wreckin Park District.
Well, you know, I know, um, I just thought of this. A lot of them stay up at the college in one of the dorms up there.
Sure. And that's, you know, there was a lady, lady there with the group the other night talking about you need to open up Airbnbs. Uh, you need more camping sites and I said, well, there's hundreds of thousands acre of BLM around here and somebody was telling me that the other day there was a car out on a well site and the guy first, when they drove in, he, it was one of the cars racing, sitting there with his shirt off, walking around doing selfies and then he put a, it on a selfie stick with his shirt on, walking around, hey, I'm out in the west here, you know, just, you could tell he was from the big city and he was really loving it here. So it, it's a lot of good experience. I, and I, I just think more communication from Rally Colorado needs to happen other than to say, hey, this is what we're doing because some of the promotional stuff I read kind of towards the tail end of it is that this turned into a super regional. That was not told to us that this was gonna be a super. I don't, I don't even know how many cars.
And if it's gonna be national next year, it's.
You could have up to sixty cars. Um, so that, where the big problem's gonna come is just what Mr. Kilbough mentioned about food. And then the other thing is, is the logic. Um, when they come in, in a big community, in a small community like this and they, they know what they're doing. Uh, Rupert knows what he's doing and, and uh, I just think that more communication and talk needs to happen before it's all finalized.
And maybe that's a good thing to, when they, they come to town next year, we need to get together as a group, everybody that's involved in any way.
Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's a great idea. So that way everybody's on the same page and we can solve the same problems.
I agree.
Because this is overwhelming for like the Wreckin Park District. It's overwhelming for the restaurants. Uh, not just a single us all, but it's overwhelming for the community, this influx so quickly. So we gotta figure out a plan on how to receive that and deal with it better. Um, because of the fact that it, it is a good thing and I think we need to encourage it. But I think the transparency and out on paper, what are we looking at here?
Right. I agree.
Not just, hey, we're filling your hotels, be happy with that. No, 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 no. Um, this is our community and uh, we wanna make sure everybody's safe and everything goes good, uh, and everybody gets what they need.
I, I can speak that they were extremely well behaved. We saw them taking traffic, of course, by traffic enforcement, but I worked every night, Thursday through Sunday night and I had zero. I had two calls and they were both locals.
We know one person of the leadership team that got stopped and last time she got stopped was when she was twenty-three years old, so.
They were all by their violations, though, weren't they?
Yeah, traffic, speeding, taking, running stop signs.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was. She would kill me if I mentioned her name, so.
But those, that's expected. A lot of those, a lot of our stops on Main Street, people think it's forty-five because in most cities, main streets are forty-five.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. It's just logistics and planning and I, I loved your comment and I think that's what needs to happen.
It's gonna have to happen that way rather than him going from place to place.
Even with a super regional, that way everybody's got on the same page. Chamber knows what town's doing, town knows what district's doing and EMS knows how to fire, cause everybody's involved. Fire, EMS, chamber, town, uh, restaurants, businesses, um, you know, just a lot of different things going on. It's surprising on how well it goes off with the amount of people they bring in to help out with the event.
Yeah.
So, and that's what the meal is for, is for the, for the, for the people to come and help and then if there's anything left for the racers.
Do you, do you charge for that meal, Tim?
No. Richard and I basically got, hey, can you guys do this? Our person- Person that provided it donated from Denver last year, last few years have. No longer do it, will you guys cook the roast? I looked at Richard and I'm like, well, tag, you're it, um, and he did it at his home. Uh, so Richard.
Do they buy the meat?
Yeah, they bought the meat, uh, but there is expenses on our side.
Absolutely.
That they don't incur, like the next day Morgan's trash service pulled in, knowing we were gonna call them. We had a full dumpster that we have to pay for, the district has to pay for. Nobody else has to pay for it because they weren't involved at that level, but those are the things we talked about. Not mad about it, it's just. Those are the things we need to work out so that those things get covered.
We don't wanna lose money, that's for sure.
No, but we do.
Okay, let's go on to fourteen B. Chamber Lunch and Learn is on Thursday at five thirty.
Is that the right time? Lunch and learn? Sounds like dinner and learn.
Well, it's fourteen B.
It's five thirty to six thirty on July twenty fourth. Uh, the flyer that's in the package.
Right, then that that's what Emma sent me.
Okay, fourteen C, youth ATV OHP operator safety course. Can you talk to about that real quick, Kilbough? Are you the one running that?
What is it?
No, I think Rich, Rich is, yeah.
Okay. Um, fourteen D, Main Street Revival, uh, was on the eighteenth.
Yep, the next one's August eighth. Uh, the lunch, the the Main Street Revival, August eighth is the next one.
Okay. And then the fourteen E is National Night Out on fifth of August. No board vacancies scheduled now, it's months. Got what you did? All right, is there anything else that needs to be brought in front of the council at this time? Well, I thank all of you for showing up and we'll adjourn at. Twenty twelve.
Do you guys wanna get a T-shirt and a hat?